Good evening and welcome to the Monday, July 11, 2016 Board of Education meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Freeman, you will notice, is not here tonight. He is at a conference of the American Association of School Administrators in Washington. So Mr. Bowden and Dr. Keen will be ably leading the administrative discussions this evening. So the first, I actually want to suggest that we add two items to the agenda. One is to, under 3.2, a new 3.2, which is to review and amend the March 19, 2016 minutes to reflect some language changes that the state needs in order to proceed with the Baldwin project. So is there a motion that we add that to the agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then the next is at the end of the meeting, I guess we could put it as 9.8, but actually have it at the end of the meeting, just an executive session on negotiations in case we need it. And I think we wanted to spend five or 10 minutes just talking, get an update on where all the units are, where all the different discussions are. So is there a motion that we add that to the agenda?
Somewhere.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So 3.1 is the June 13, 2016 minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read those over? Is there a motion that we approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Are there any changes, corrections, additions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then 3.2, this is the minutes of March 9, 2015. Here's what happened. On March 9, 2015, we approved a document with certain information on it relating to a window project at Baldwin. And we, the motion specifically was on March 9 to approve the bonding items recommended from the Operations Committee. That motion carried unanimously. We would like to amend the minutes to say as follows. A motion was made by Mrs. Renner to approve the bonding items and Baldwin education specifications as recommended from the Operations Committee and seconded by Mr. Sands. The motion carried unanimously. It's the same exact substance, but this is just to call it the education specification so that the state understands that that is what we are doing. Yes, I will give you a copy of this, yes. So I guess Ms. Renner, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, I move that we make that change.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. That, it should reflect that that is no substantive change whatsoever. It's just simply a labeling issue to keep the state happy. I guess. I guess that's one way to put it. Okay. The item four is public forum for topics on the board agenda. Does any member of the public wish to say anything? All right. Not happening tonight. All right. Ms. Renner went over the expenditures.
We discussed the expenditures for the month of June during the Operations Committee at some length. The total expenditures for the month were $9,968,040.12, which is the amount that I'm going to ask you to approve. That amount is substantially higher than our normal monthly expenditures. With a budget of approximately $57 million, we would expect to see more like $4 or $5 million per month. However, because of the contractual and legal ways that our school year staff are allowed to take their annual compensation, we have extra payroll in June for people who choose to spread their, either spread their payroll over a 12-month period or take a lump sum check at the end of the school year. Those are two of the options that our school year employees have. And as a result, we have an additional payroll in the month of June of about $3.8 million, just simply related to the timing of when the annual payments are made. In addition, during June, we made the annual payments under our technology lease, which is the way we finance our technology purchases. Those payments totaled about $380,000. So other than those unusual items, the amount is much more in line with what we normally expect to see. We went through the individual bills. There was nothing of great note that generated a lot of discussion, I don't think. There were some expenditures that we made from our budget related to the Guilford High School building project, which are always reimbursed to us subsequently, so that'll all settle up before the final year-end numbers are in. So for the, at the end of June, we've expended 98.1% of our budget. A year ago at this time, we were at 98.39% of our budgets. That's a comparable number. And even though the fiscal year concluded in June, we will continue to have more bills and so on come in over the next couple of months. We do project to end the year with a small surplus. Any questions?
Questions? Sorry?
Okay. So that's a motion to approve the June expenditures in the amount of $9,968,040.12.
Okay, now's the motion, second? Any discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We do, I think we should note that later on in the agenda, we have budget transfers. Always do this at the end of the year, but we did talk about that a little bit in the meeting. Okay. Item six is communications. I'm not sure I have a lot of communications.
I actually did have something over the past few days. I had some questions about the trees that were cut down in front of Adams. There were a number of beautiful old trees that were cut down. Some are still there in front of the old part of the building, but I believe that the utility companies took them down. I believe that they had the posting, there was a sticker on them.
Do you know?
They were posted, I saw them, because they were tagged.
Yeah, they were tagged.
Those tags are town tags. There is a tree warden in town, and the, at least as I understand, that any tree within the right-of-way of a public highway belongs not to the property owner, but to the town. And so the town has the right to either take it down or trim it or whatever. There have been some pretty aggressive tree trimming along utility lines, obviously, but that's something that they cooperate with the town about. I don't, we should ask, well, Mr. Gurnham just left. He might, I don't think that that had anything, I shouldn't speculate, but I guess I will. I don't think that had anything to do with the schools. I don't think that was our, I know the posting wasn't, because the posting is by the tree warden. The tree warden is a town employee. But, you know, I think we could, we could, we could check on that. And so you could correspond with, I think those were old sugar maples, actually, and so anyway, I mean, it'd be interesting to know if there's a plan to replant anything there or something else. Right?
All right. Okay, thank you.
Are the lines on that side of the road? The utility lines?
Yeah. I think so.
I think they're on both sides, because they were, they were working there today.
They put up the poles off and down.
Oh, that's probably what it is. Well, okay, we should find out, and we'll get back.
Yeah, I'll send out a message to everybody after I find out the information.
Okay. Anything else? Any other messages or communications? Okay. No student representatives, because there are no students. No superintendent's report, because there is no superintendent. This is going very well so far with these students. Mr. Bowden, what do you think? 9.1 on the board agenda is act on various personnel items. One, you got the resignation of Jim Ford. We actually accepted that last month, so we don't need to do that again, maybe because he's been here for 38 years. He goes to retire twice. But, so is there a motion to approve the resignation for the purposes of retirement of Elizabeth Sharp? Betty Sharp, who's been a kindergarten teacher at Cox for 35 years. Is there a motion to ratify her resignation?
So moved.
Second. With our deep thanks and gratitude, she's been, it's kind of a little hard to imagine the district without her. She's been around forever. But is all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then three new teachers. Amy Ulette, health teacher at Adams. Effective, well, it says effective September 1, but I assume that's actually going to be a little bit earlier. Cindy Chen, grade one teacher at Jones. And Clara Otto, an elementary Spanish teacher at Cox. Is there a motion to ratify those three appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments about this? And I do have a question about hiring in general, but we can talk about it a little bit. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So where do we stand on hiring?
Right now, we have a position at the high school, a French teacher that they're still interviewing for. We also have a few elementary positions that are open due to retirements. And I know that the elementary administrators have met, have interviewed, and are putting their remaining candidates forward to Dr. Freeman when he returns.
Okay. Where do we stand with respect to enrollment in the kindergarten?
I don't have an update from Dr. Freeman, and I don't know if you do, Dr. Keen?
No, I don't think we've had a lot of movement since our last report, so.
What's the cutoff date for parents?
The first day of school.
When the bus leaves by the house.
Sorry, too late.
Because sometimes they will enroll. I mean, there are, of course, two administrative positions that we're working on right now as well and close to finalizing. They've begun interviewing for special ed coordinator, and, you know, we're still in the final stages of reference checking for the principal at Cox. So those are two big hires.
Question about the French teacher at the high school. Currently is a French teacher who also teaches Arabic. Is he leaving?
No, no.
So the teacher that you're looking to hire is in addition?
No, this is a retirement, a renaissance. You approved her retirement, I think, maybe last month. And she was a French teacher, and so it's replacing her.
Because Mr. Nosery only teaches, I think, one or two classes of French.
The rest are Arabic.
Yeah, and the rest are Arabic.
And the rest are Arabic, yeah.
Correct.
Good.
Yeah. Okay. Well, you know, if you could let us know about the kindergarten enrollment, I'm sure Dr. Freeman will have some thoughts about that as it moves on.
I know we're watching it very carefully.
Yeah, because, you know, it's always an issue.
Okay. 9.2 on the agenda is to possibly waive the bid requirement for the technology lease. Do you want to talk about this? We talked about it in the Operations Committee.
Sure, we did, yes. So we're preparing to sign a contract to enter into our next technology lease, purchasing approximately half a million dollars' worth of technology equipment and financing it through a lease. We would first like to ask the board to approve waiving the bid process for this item. We have a policy that we go out to bid, formal, sealed bids, the whole rather involved process for all purchases that exceed a certain dollar amount. It doesn't really make sense in this case, because there are a limited number of vendors. It's equipment finance companies that will give us a rate on this. It's an interest rate in effect. And by the time we go, they probably wouldn't even respond to a bid, because by the time we go through the whole process, it's lengthy, interest rates change. It's just not really relevant to this particular item. The dollar amounts involved, the interest rates are so very low that even if, you know, if somehow we had gone out to bid and managed to shave a fraction of a percent off of the rate, it's a tiny dollar amount. So we'd like to ask, I'd like to make a motion that we forego our normal bid requirement for this item.
Well, and just to clarify, we have approached, I guess, three qualified bidders, and we received two proposals.
Competitive, yes.
Yeah, so it's not as if we haven't tested the market, it's just that we haven't done it in the more formal way.
Okay, so that's a motion that we waive the bidding requirement for the purposes of this technology lease.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So then 9.3 is actually to execute a resolution on the technology lease. And that is that the board undertake with the town a lease purchase financing in a principal amount not to exceed $500,000 over a period of five years to finance the project. Now, what, I should just say, I mean, we've been doing this for several years now. This was originally a way to get our technology budget up to catch up, frankly, with years and years of underfunding. And this was a technique that we thought was a good idea, and now with interest rates so low, it seems like it's still a good idea, because I think the interest rate on this is 1.3% or 1, yeah, that's, why not? And so we do need to get the town's approval for this, given that we don't have, the Board of Education itself doesn't have the ability to incur debt, but the town, the Board of Selectment has already approved it, given the financial arrangements. So is there a motion that we enter into, that we authorize a lease purchase financing agreement to finance the acquisition of technology equipment by the Board of Education?
So moved.
Second. Any other questions? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 9.4 is budget transfers. Now, this has to do with our 2015-16 budget year, and as always, at the end of the year, we need to move some items around to cover things that were either more expensive or less costly than we had anticipated, oh, I don't know, 18 months ago when we were formulating the budget on this particular year. So do you want to talk about this?
Sure. As the Chair mentioned, we set our budget such a long time ago, and in particular, there are certain areas where changes can happen, and they can have substantial dollar, a substantial dollar effect on our budget. Many of these changes relate to the special education area, where we found that our tuition costs to the district to send a child to a particular school where his or her needs can be met appropriately, the cost can be either more than what we budgeted, or more likely, students are moving into the district that weren't here 18 months ago when we first worked on these numbers. And as a result, we need to transfer funds into the tuition line in the amount of $240,000, into purchased services for $115,000, which also affects a number of other areas, such as legal, and into transportation in the amount of $212,000. In addition, we would like to transfer funds into the salary line. Now, earlier in the year, we transferred $400,000 from the salary line, quite early in the year, before it was really reasonable for us to be able to pin down where we were going to end the year on these various line items. So at that point, we took funds out of salaries as a placeholder, knowing that we would probably be coming back and making some rearrangements later on. During, close to the end of the year, we had a number of retirements of teachers who worked for the district at a time when their contract provided that a teacher who left the employment, who retired from the district with unused sick days, would receive cash compensation for that time. It's not, not the case with the current contract or with recent hires, but some of the retired teachers were here when that term existed in their contract. So we have a fairly large cash payout to make in connection with the unused sick pay. As a result, we do need to move money back into our salary line to be able to do that. So we have, I don't have this total, Linda, I don't know if you have the total of this.
No, I don't have a total.
It's about nine, it's about $990,000 of transfers into those lines, and the funds will be coming from unexpended lines. Employee benefits, $446,000. Supplies and materials, $366,000, and capital, $201,000.
So is that a motion that we make those transfers?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Now, we, questions about this? Comments? We did talk about this in some detail in the Operations Committee, and I think there are some very fair questions that we need to keep pushing, moving forward in our next year's budget development. But this is, we obviously can't overexpend the budget and don't have the ability to and have to take it from somewhere, and this is what's available, I gather, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then 9.5 is to look at various reductions in our original budget from what was originally, what we approved all those many months ago, and that the town approved at referendum earlier in, about roughly a month ago in June. And I think Dr. Freeman's recommendation is that we reduce the salaries line from that budget that we approved back in, whenever it was, February, to 570, by the amount of $577,000. In other words, salary, the salary line would be reduced by 577. Mr. Bowden, that's right. Am I correct?
I'm looking at the sheet right now that you have.
And I'll get to how that's made up. But the salary line reduction, the total reduction would be $577,000. There would also be a reduction from the site improvement or capital line, I guess would be more accurate, the capital line of $173,000. The, and I think just for disclosure purposes, the reduction in the salaries is going to be, the recommendation would be, that it would be made up by, first of all, reductions in salary by virtue of teachers who, some number of teachers who have retired and their replacements are hired at a lower rate, that the new technology position would be deleted, that the receptionist at central office would be, that that position would be terminated, that the administrator, the building administrative assistant administrator would be not, right, would not be replaced as savings of $40,000, that the new custodian that Mr. Gurnham has asked for at the high school not to be funded. There is a .5 music teacher position at Baldwin that would, the recommendation by Dr. Freeman, it would be that that would be ended, given that everybody at Baldwin, all the students at Baldwin already have classes in music, and so this was a, this may be, in a time of budget priorities, may not, may be a lesser priority. The international baccalaureate coordinator at the high school that has been funded by virtue of a .5 teacher position would be done away with and instead absorbed by an administrator and a restructuring within the administrative office. There would be another additional small reduction of part-time positions at the high school and the teaching staff, and then $20,000 in reductions in athletics relating to cheerleading and assistant football coach that actually was a new, would have been a new position, and dance coordinator and various equipment. But I think Dr. Freeman's, and we talked about this in some detail with Dr. Freeman, I think the goal that he was trying to accomplish was to not, was to not target any one specific area, try to, try to do the least, have the least impact on classroom instruction as possible, but make sure that this was all the $750,000 in reductions were being spread fairly across different areas. And so it's, there's some reductions in administration, some reductions in instruction, some reductions in athletics, some reductions in music. So, and we're just going to have to continue to work moving forward and try to do the best that we can within the appropriation. So is there a motion that we reduce from our first budget the salary line by 577,000 and the capital line by 173,000 for a total of 750,000 to match the appropriated amount that the town approved?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just a comment, I'm, you know, I think this is the right way to do it, but I think, first of all, it'd probably be helpful to communicate this, and I did see an article, I don't know if it went into this level of detail in the Courier, but to actually communicate this somehow to the public, because it's hard, it's hard to take this in, I think, without looking at the numbers, but.
The Courier, or I shouldn't say the Courier, but the reporter for the Courier is here, so.
Yep. Good.
If you would like a copy of this, we'll be happy to get it.
That would be great. But to put it in perspective a little bit, and I know you said all this, but if I were watching TV, I would want to know, sort of, I mean, there's $750,000 in cuts, $577,000 of that is personnel, and that is split, the administration, which I know has been a concern, you know, there's 90,000 that's coming from that, there's one custodian at $75,000, which I think was an interesting discussion. You know, the actual maintenance of the high school is a bit easier right now because it's new, but it is more square footage and tougher to kind of keep it clean. So I think, you know, they really did want to have that here, but we're going to put that off for a year. We did decrease music at Baldwin, teacher positions at GHS, athletics. And then the capital line, which again is the thing that, you know, I worry about when we go through these budget cuts, is that we defer things that don't show up immediately, but that over time will come back to cause us trouble. And I think this year, we're able to shift some, maybe because of the lights with the bond, but I would hate to see that reduced over time if we go to, going to what the budget is this year to next year, you know, because I think that does catch up with us. So I think, you know, this is, these are real cuts that happened because of two failed referenda, and I think that it's wise to distribute them. I think it's very good that we didn't get to a third referendum, so.
I think we can agree on that.
Absolutely.
That's all I have to say.
And I might want to mention, I mean, the statement, we decrease music at Baldwin, we decrease music staffing at Baldwin. We're still going to have the same amount of music for students.
But isn't that decreasing the actual, like, the required versus the, I'm sorry, the?
So what happens, it's my understanding that there's a music class, and the students, in addition to that music class, well, there's a music class for half a year, is my understanding. In addition to that music class, they can also take either band, chorus, or orchestra. So they're essentially doubling up, is that correct? So they, you know, a student may be in band and then for the entire year, and for half a year, they're in health, and the other half of the year, they would take this general music class. And it's my understanding, again, that Dr. Freeman's proposed to cut that music, that half a year of general music. So the students will no longer be getting general music, but they will be fulfilling those requirements within either band, orchestra, or.
So they're still getting music, it's just not the required. So there is, there is a cut in.
That would be correct.
Right.
And we, it used to be, my recollection is, it used to be the situation in grades five and six. It was removed from grade six a couple of years ago, something. And so now the rationale is that they've still got the full year of performance music, but they don't have the additional half year of general music. You know, there's been a lot of schedule changes.
There's a lot of overlap.
There is a lot of.
Right, right.
So, yeah, I mean, that's a good point, though, that we're not, this isn't a de-emphasis of the music program, but it's, but I don't think anybody wants to do that. But this is, in a time when you've got to set priorities, this is the time when, you know, everybody is taking a full year of performance music regardless, so.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So any other questions? Any other comments? All right, we get to start this again in about four months, three months? Just thought I'd leave that with you, Mr. Sands.
Goody-goody. Say we need to vote.
Correct. And was, did you make a motion? You made a motion?
Yes. No, someone else made it.
I made a motion.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We are up to.
Nine, six.
Nine, six, which is to receive the strategic school profiles. This is just a receive item tonight, right?
Correct. Dr. Valistracee is not here tonight. She's enjoying Arizona. No. You know, when you have kids in school.
I don't know. Go ahead.
This policy, 6324, merely changes the name in the policy manual from strategic school profiles to profile and performance report. It requires the superintendent to submit to the board after November 1 of each school year this report. Couple of months ago, we went over the difference between the two reports, but I think for the sake of the audience, Dr. Keen, could you explain what this new report is all about?
Okay. Basically, the State Department of Education has been working very hard to reduce the amount of paperwork on schools. You know, they used to write a lot of narratives and they were, it was reported and posted. And the district also wrote narratives, and we continue to write a report, an annual report, but the schools no longer have to do that. They just send all their notes to the district and we compile the report for them. So in effort, and some other efforts, were just to reorganize accountability, the state accountability, to match a waiver that was approved at the federal level, also to match the new requirements for Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, and also to make it more readable for the public. And it hadn't really gone through a major change. A lot of the information is the same as it had been previously. We don't, we're hoping that it's going to be more time efficient, and we will, because, you know, we were always at least a year behind, and it will be powered by a new company called EdSite, and I think it's edsite.org. I'm not for sure what the extension is. But we have had one, but a profile and performance report, but we wanted to change our policy to make sure it matches, the name matches, because strategic school profiles are no longer required.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's just a receive tonight and there's, you know, I suppose we could waive the policy and, but there's no reason to. Will, the district will survive another month with a mislabeled policy, so we'll carry that over to August. All right. Nine point seven is to discuss for possible action, an extension of the superintendent's contract and terms for 2016-17. We have actually already met as part of the Operations Committee meeting in executive session to talk about this, so I don't see a need to go into executive session now. Does anybody else? Okay. So just to frame this, the, the agreement that we have with Dr. Freeman and have had with several years now is that he works here on a three-year contract, but only the terms for the next fiscal year are negotiated at the beginning of each fiscal year. The terms of his contract in each fiscal year are subject to negotiation and we entered into with Dr. Freeman, as we had with Dr. Forcella back in 2006 or '05, the, a merit pay system that we were taking, would take into account six particular factors or several factors, including performance, community relations, board relations, leadership on educational initiatives and communication, other matters. We have also included within the set of factors, the overall needs of the district, which has been, which is relevant this year in particular. We did meet with Dr. Freeman last month and did a, a review of his work here. I think it's fair to summarize that as that we, we would summarize, I, we can summarize that by saying we maintain our high degree, our, our, our deep enthusiasm for the work that Dr. Freeman is doing. We think that he has become a leader in educational services, not only in Guilford, but also really in the state of Connecticut. I, I think that we really don't spend enough time talking about everything that he does at UConn and at the state level with CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, and also now nationally. He's on the executive committee of the state group and he's on one of the high-level committees of the AAAS as well, the American Association of School Administrators. So he's, he's really developed a, a leadership role in public education in, in, in our state and, and so we, we, I think, are unanimous in believing that Dr. Freeman continues to do outstanding work here and, and would like to encourage him to, to remain here. So, however, we, and we do recognize that given what the budget situation was this year, this is probably not a year that the traditional merit system, merit pay compensation really is appropriate under all the circumstances. And we did build in a safety valve in the contract that we could take into account the, the overall needs of the district in setting the terms for next year. From talking with the members of the board over the last two months and also talking to Dr. Freeman, I would like to propose that we, first of all, add a third year to his contract so that the contract would run from 2018-19. We add a third year for 2018-19 at terms to be decided upon mutual agreement. Second, that we increase his compensation for 2016-17 by 2.25% over the current year. And third, that we begin to phase out the rather unusual vesting provision that we had in his agreement for his, his annuity, his pension contribution. As the board will recall, back several years ago, we wanted to incentivize, if that's a set of words, we, we wanted to give him an appropriate incentive to remain with the district for a period of time and so we, we set up his, his pension annuity contribution so that it would vest gradually over a five-year period. The theory was that we wanted to make, we wanted to either, I guess, encourage him to stay or make it more costly for somebody to lure him away. And so it's, I think, I think we agree that it has performed its function, given that Dr. Freeman has been here now for five years? Okay. So, so I think my proposal would be that we begin to phase that out and we phase it out gradually over the next two years, but in equal, in equal amounts. So extend him for a third year, salary, compensation increase 2.25% and begin to phase out the, the pension annuity contributions. So that, that is my proposal and if, if somebody would put that in the form of a motion?
I'll put it in a motion, but also point out that the other terms of his contract stay the same.
Correct. Yes. Right.
I'll second.
Okay. Any, any discussion, any comments, questions? Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Good. So we will, I'll work on that. Nine point eight, we will defer for the moment. That's the executive session on negotiations. Item 10 is committee reports. Dr. Valistracee isn't here, is there anything going on in the policy committee? No? Operations committee, anything else you want to talk about?
I think we've addressed it, no.
Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. What's our next agenda on that, Dr. Keane? Do you remember?
Well, we have a list, we don't meet until October, so we'll be sending out, I took all of your recommendations around engagement, homework...
Oh, do you want to update what's going on with the homework committee? I know that, that there has, there has been some movement on the homework issue.
The, well, only that George Cooksey from the high school is actually going to chair the committee. I'll be serving on it as well as representatives from all the schools and we do have some parents who are serving on it as well. So the committee is formed. They haven't had their organizational meeting, that won't happen until September. They're planning to, in the January curriculum instruction and assessment, they're planning to have an update on their, the homework study, I mean, the research that they have done by that time and then they will be meeting with the policy committee a little bit later, but they're expecting to have a report, at least a discussion with everybody before they go to the policy with some recommendations from their group.
Let's see, the agenda item I asked about the engagement, is that scheduled?
Yes, I said engagement.
When is that, is that scheduled?
Well, no, we haven't scheduled it yet. It'll probably be January. We will have the assessment results analysis, that will be pretty early on, that'll be in October and then we don't have another meeting until January. So it'll be the second curriculum instruction and assessment.
Okay. But you have other items you're adding on that meeting as well?
Yes.
And Dr. Keane, just, I, you know, I almost mentioned this during communications, but they were very informal and I had a couple of parents approach me with their delight in the new Baldwin schedule and wondering if there's any possibility of implementing something similar. Obviously, there's more challenges at Adams, so I don't know if that's something that we want to explore further or with the longer blocks.
Well, I will, I know that Principal Catherine Walker has been having some discussions around scheduling, which she does regularly with staff, to say, "How can we make it better? How can we make it more efficient?" I don't know that it would fit the way it does at Baldwin, but certainly they are having those discussions right now. And it wouldn't be for this coming school year, it would be for the following school year, but they're making some plans and looking at that now.
Great.
Okay. Anything else on that? Building committee, I think everybody knows that after we voted at our workshop meeting last month to, I don't remember what the verb was, did we recommend or did we encourage? I forgot what it was. The, the building committee to use an alternative to rubber, crumb rubber infill. I, it's my understanding that they in fact did vote the next day to proceed and awarded a bid for a, a synthetic turf field with a plastic, plastic coated sand infill. So that's roughly the same cost as every, as all the other synthetic turf alternatives. So that's, I done, I guess. They didn't ask anything?
Yes, and the contract has been signed with, with the vendor and the process has started.
Okay. Anything else from the building committee? Anything else going on here that you know of?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Town committee liaisons, anything going on town committee liaison-wise? Anything with Lern? Do they meet during the summer?
No.
All right. Item 11, public questions. Any member of the public wish to ask a question? All right. And I want to go, well, so we'll go back to nine point eight, which is an executive session on negotiations. I should say, we're in negotiations right now with several different units. We are in negotiations with the paraprofessional and clerical on a wage reopeners for the third year of a three-year contract. And I should say, the reason we did this, this didn't just happen accidentally, this happened because at the time when we entered into these contracts three years ago, we were, there was some real uncertainty about what was going to happen with the Affordable Care Act and what the impact on public employment was going to be, so we very thoughtfully and cleverly kept it up, kept it open, starting this year, but the downside of being thoughtful and clever was that it gives us a bunch of units all, all negotiating at the exact same time. But what are you going to do? I mean, you know, that's, that was, so we're, we're doing a wage reopeners on third year of paroclerical, we're starting negotiations with the Guilford Education Association, the teachers, we're in negotiations with the custodians, we're in negotiations with food service. Am I missing anybody? I think Paris.
We're also starting with administrators as well.
Okay. So it's going to be a busy year on the negotiation front. All, then we'll, we'll, we'll see how it goes. We'll just, but I do want to just touch base a little bit quickly tonight to talk about a couple of broad parameters, if you will. So is there a motion that we go into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we will come into public session only for the purposes of adjourning and there will be no further public votes this evening. Thank you.